Okay, we are live.
Okay. Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, May 19th, 2020. Thank you to everyone for attending our first virtual meeting. Please be patient as this is new territory for all of us, as it may be for you. Luckily, we have some extra members of San Bruno City staff who have had some experience running these meetings, and they're helping us tonight. I'd like to say a big thank you to them for making this meeting possible, and staff has also undertaken a remarkable amount of work to prepare their reports for tonight. Thank you for everyone for making this possible and keeping forward progress moving in our city. To our fellow members of the public, please know that we want to hear from you. If you're in the audience and you would like to address the Planning Commission during public comment for the item on the agenda, please use the Raise Your Hand button. It's at the bottom of Zoom. When it is your turn to speak, the city clerk Melissa, she'll call your name, and she will unmute you, and you will be given three minutes to address the commission. If you are joining us by telephone, you can also address the commission during public comment by pressing nine, I'm sorry, star nine, and the city clerk will address you and unmute you, and you will also be given three minutes to address the commission. And please note, anyone in attendance may only speak once per agenda item. A quick note to my fellow commissioners. For clarity, during our remote meeting, we will be doing roll call votes for every item on our agenda. We will also be using, this is new, we'll be using a roll call vote to close public comment in our sessions. So please be prepared to motion and second, and staff will facilitate a roll call vote to close public comment. So we'll begin with our roll call for attendance. Pamela, can you please lead our roll call?
Of course. Chair Lethen.
Present.
Vice Chair Biassadi.
Here.
Commissioner Hamilton.
Here.
Commissioner Harmon.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
You have a call.
Okay, thank you. And we are going to do the Pledge of Allegiance tonight, and Melissa Thurman, our city clerk, will present the flag, and I will lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance. I think this is it. I will begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We will move on to our business items. The first is the approval of our minutes from February 18th, 2020.
Through the chair, I have some comments regarding the minutes.
Yes.
So, item 4A, this is, these are minutes from February. Item 4A states that we received a presentation from Roy Ronald, chief building official. We actually did not receive that presentation. Mr. Ronald did not attend the meeting, nor was any actual presentation actually prepared. Instead, we were asked questions about topics we would want to see in an actual future presentation. So that whole bull is wrong. In item 4B, the housing-related summary, we received a very informative presentation, and we had a lot of comments and questions, and there was a lot of back and forth where we got asked clarifying questions. None of that has appeared in the minutes. And then, under item six, comments from committee members, I presented comments about my concern about the reduced role this commission has on large projects. And I also believe that Commissioner Harmon gave us a summary of a seminary he recently attended. None of that has appeared in the minutes either. So I've got major problems with these minutes, and I will not vote to accept that.
Does anybody else have any comments on the minutes? Maybe Commissioner Harmon, do you recall?
I mean, Tom already, that, yeah, I did it, I mean, I don't know that the summary of the training was, you know, that important. The materials are definitely still available. I passed them on through staff, they're available. But, but yes, I agree with Commissioner Hamilton's critique.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Is this something we can have the staff correct? Approve it and correct, approve it tonight and correct, and then have them correct it going forward? Or do you want, or Tom, do you want them to bring it back?
I think we need to bring it back because it's not, you know, when, normally when there's corrections, like, oh, you know, that word should have been this word or whatever, that's clear. There's entire sections missing. So I think it needs to come back.
Okay. Any other commissioners?
I support that.
Okay. So I suppose we could accept a motion to request staff to review the minutes and bring it back to our next meeting.
I can make a motion to recommend that staff redo the minutes and put in the missing pieces and bring it back for the next meeting for acceptance.
I will second.
All right. I guess we're doing roll call. Do we need, do we need Commissioner Hamilton to clarify any further things that he wanted to have reviewed? Or is staff clear about what we, what we need, what's missing?
Through the chair, I apologize. Commissioner Hamilton is absolutely right. The chief building official did not make a presentation. I will definitely make that amendment. We're trying to move into a summary action minutes, so it does not have the details as you are used to see. I will add, and I'll take your suggestion, add more summary to the presentation that I gave in February, and also add the items that were presented under item number six. However, I do want to emphasize is that it will not be the full details that were presented to Planning Commission in the past. But I'll definitely make amendment and bring it back to the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Perhaps we can, it sounds like we need to do a roll call vote. So if that could be facilitated, that'd be great.
Sure. Chair Lethen.
Aye.
Vice Chair Biassadi.
Aye.
Commissioner Hamilton.
Aye.
Commissioner Harmon.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan.
Aye.
You have six zero.
Okay, thank you. We now are ready for public comment. Melissa, do we have any members of the public who would like to speak on items that are not on the agenda?
At this time, there are no hands up, but once again, for the members of the public who are in the audience, if you would like to use the Raise Your Hand feature, you should see an option at the bottom of your screen. If you are calling by phone, which I don't see anybody in there, you can press star nine for future reference if you call anybody. But right now, there are no hands up.
Okay. All right, well, they'll have their opportunity to do this again at the close of our meeting. So we will go ahead and see if there are any announcements of conflict of interest. Are there any commissioners who need to recuse themselves on any items this evening? No.
No.
All right. So then we'll go ahead and move into our public hearing items. Item 4A is with regards to the San Bruno Recreation and Aquatic Center at 251 City Parkway. We will be reviewing an environmental impact report, or EIR, for the project pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA. The Planning Commission will consider certification of the final EIR, approval of the use permit, and the architectural use permit. We will also review a request for an architectural review permit and use permit to demolish the existing Veterans Memorial Building and Pool to construct a new two-story, 49,360 square foot San Bruno Recreation and Aquatic Center pursuant to sections 12.108.010 and 12.96170.C dot four of the San Bruno Municipal Code. The city of San Bruno is the applicant and the owner. Staff report, please.
Yes, thank you so much. I will begin sharing my screen now. All right, and you can all see my screen and hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, wonderful. Good evening, planning commissioners. I'm Kelly Beggs, contract senior planner for the city of San Bruno, and I'm pleased to present the item before you tonight, which, as Chair Lethen correctly said, includes a request for use permit, an architectural review permit, certification of a final EIR, adoption of the SEQA findings, and a mitigation monitor reporting program to allow for construction of a new recreation and aquatic center for the city of San Bruno. This slide shows what we'll be discussing this evening. I'll be turning it over to Joanne McGreeney, Community Services Director for the city, to review the project's background, and we'll then move into the existing conditions, the proposed project, and the environmental review. Dahim Meng with Group Four Architecture will present the project's design, and then we will wrap up with tonight's action. So with that, I'll turn it over to Joanne McGreeney, Community Services Director.
Good evening, parish nurse. I'm delighted to be a part of the presentation for this project with you all tonight. I'll be providing some background on how this project came to be. In 2013, consistent with the terms of the settlement agreement between the city and Pacific Gas and Electric Company in the amount of $70 million, the city established an independent, not-for-profit San Bruno Community Foundation to manage the restitution settlement funds and to oversee the use of the funds. In 2015, San Bruno Community Foundation sponsored a broad-based community listening campaign, which identified the community's highest priorities to be the replacement and/or addition of new community facilities, including, one, a new library, two, a recreation center, three, a swimming pool to replace existing facilities, and four, a new community center to support delivery and expansion of community programs and services and to meet the community's needs for meeting and community gathering and event space. A subsequent facilitated community discussion process was conducted to identify which among the four community facilities discussed should proceed with design and construction as the community's highest priority for use of the $50 million allocated by the San Bruno Community Foundation. That process concluded in February of 2017 with the San Bruno City Council's approval of the Community Facility Prioritization Report, which identified replacement of the recreation center and aquatic center as one of the community's highest priorities. Community outreach was conducted during the project's schematic design phase to get community's feedback on the site design and materials. As you can see, approximately 1,788 members of the community provided feedback that is incorporated into the project that you will see tonight. This slide presents this year's meetings, which began in March with updates to the San Bruno Community Foundation and the city council, continued with the project's architectural review committee meeting, and culminate tonight with a Planning Commission meeting. Now I'll turn the presentation back over to Kelly Beggs, who will describe the existing conditions and the proposed project.
Thank you, Joanne. So this slide presents an aerial view of San Bruno City Park and its surroundings. As you can see, the park is surrounded by residential, institutional, and educational uses with Parkside Middle School, which is located over here, St. Roberts Catholic Church and Elementary School located here to the north, and then the former El Cristal Elementary School to the south, which is proposed as a new private Stratford school. St. Andrews Episcopal Church is also located to the south, a little bit further off of the slide here. The existing San Bruno City Park includes the Veterans Memorial Building, the San Bruno Park Pool, three baseball fields, tennis courts, multiple picnic areas and playgrounds, and three parking areas. The park is bisected by City Parkway, which you can see here, which then connects Crystal Springs Road to the north to De Soto Way, which is south of the site. A channelized creek, Elzangen Creek, runs through the park, and you've probably seen it running along City Parkway here, and then it moves into the parking area here, and then it moves into an underground culvert north of here. This slide shows photographs of the existing park and facilities. On the bottom right photograph does show that existing alignment of City Parkway and Elzangen Creek with the creek running into the parking stalls, as you can see right here. Then the top two photographs are of the Veterans Memorial Building, which was constructed in 1955 and is approximately 30,700 square feet in size. The existing Veterans Memorial Building and Pool would be demolished in City Parkway, and Elzangen Creek would be realigned as part of the proposed project, which I will move in now. This slide shows the site plan. And as you can see, the parking along City Parkway would be separated into a dedicated lot and then realigned. This City Parkway would be moved to the south of this portion, and then the creek would also be realigned to be out of the vehicle right of way and to remove interference with those parking stalls and overall improve the safety of the site for pedestrians and for vehicles. The new proposed building footprint would be here. There's a public plaza located here. And then there's also a large, long area that you'll see here. This area is proposed to be converted into an outdoor pool and a zero-entry waiting pool and splash pad in Phase Two of the project, but that is pending the availability of additional funding. And we have some more illustrations later in the presentation that'll show you what that would look like. So this slide shows the first floor plan. The main entry to the lobby and community lounge is located right here. An additional entry is located here. That entry would be used seasonally during camps and for special events, so most of the entry of the public would occur through this location. The major features of this floor include the indoor pool and the gymnasium. The indoor pool is adjacent to men's and women's locker rooms, among other storage and utility areas, as well as two family changing rooms and two party rooms here. You can see there are staff offices and a control desk located near that main entryway here, a gym with bleachers for spectators located here, and then three classrooms located here. These two medium classrooms would have a movable partition that would allow for conversion of this room into one large room. There are two stairwells and two elevators that lead up to the second floor, located here and here. And I'll move into that second floor plan now. This slide depicts the second floor plan, which includes an elevated walking track, fitness, cardio, and weights area, group exercise room, community hall, catering kitchen, and conference room. The community hall, similar to those classrooms on the first floor, does have a movable partition wall here that would allow the space to be either separated into two spaces or used as one larger space. It also opens onto an outdoor deck. And then lastly, there are some additional staff offices located here. This slide shows the project's overall tree planting and removal plan. I'll also move into some zoomed-in versions, as I imagine this can be a bit difficult to see the detail. Fifty-two heritage trees would be removed during construction of the proposed project, and fifty-two new trees would be planted. The proposed species consists of coastlive oaks and sycamore trees, both of which are native species. And then, just to note that almost half of the heritage trees that will be removed are eucalyptus trees, which are non-native trees that present fall risks and fire hazards. This slide shows the proposed tree planting around the parking area and adjacent to the creek, which you can see the lighter color here is the sycamore and the darker is the coastline oaks. This slide presents a section of the site to help you understand how the landscaping and the outdoor public areas will all work together. The main entry, you can see, is located here, and then it transitions into the community plaza. The community plaza is centered around a preserved coastline oak tree, which would be protected during construction. And then seat stairs lead up into the seasonal entry located here, which you can also see has been planned around preservation of a large redwood tree. Then, past that area, there is the lawn area, which would be eventually converted into an outdoor pool area, which I'll show you in the next slide. So this is Phase Two of the project, and as you can see, there's additional outdoor pool and a splash pad and zero-entry pool located here. Now I'll move on to the project's environmental review. So an EIR was prepared pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act. The process began with a notice of preparation that was circulated to agencies and interested parties to help identify issues that the environmental report should focus on. After the scoping period, a draft EIR was prepared to analyze environmental impacts. The draft EIR was then released for a public comment for a 45-day period. And following the close of that period, a response to comments documents was prepared to clarify and answer any comments and questions. Lastly, the final EIR was published on the project's website and sent to any commenters on May 8th of this year. I'll note that the final EIR consists of that draft EIR document and the response to comments document together. This slide shows a summary of all of the resource topics that are analyzed by the EIR. And this left box, these are all the impacts that were deemed to be less than significant. And then in this gray box right here, these are all the resource topics that the project would result in impacts that are less than significant with mitigation, meaning that mitigation measures would be implemented by the city to prevent environmental impact to these resource topics. Regarding transportation, I will note that we received a question from Commissioner Harmon regarding the project's use of Level of Service, also known as LOS, analysis, as a threshold of significance rather than vehicle miles traveled, also referred to as VMT analysis. Cities are required to use VMT as a significance threshold, but that will start later on this year in July. As the project's transportation analysis was initiated over a year ago and approvals would be complete prior to July, the LOS analysis is appropriate for the project. But I also wanted to note that there is a brief VMT analysis in the response to comments document. Lastly, the project did have one significant and unavoidable impact due to demolition of the Veterans Memorial Building, which would result in a substantial adverse change on a historical resource. Mitigation measures that require the documentation of the Veterans Memorial Building prior to demolition would minimize this significant cultural resources impact, but there is no mitigation measure that could reduce the impact to less than significant. Lastly, regarding the environmental review, there are a number of resolutions which have a number of environmental documents attached today, so I did just want to go over what all of these things are. And the final EIR, as I mentioned before, consists of the draft EIR and the response to comments document. The findings, a statement of overriding considerations document, presents written findings for identified significant impacts accompanied by a brief explanation for the rationale for each of those findings. And the statement of overriding considerations is for significant and unavoidable impacts and to balance the project benefits against significant unavoidable impacts. Then lastly, the mitigation monitoring reporting program specifies the implementation timeline, responsibility, and oversight of all the mitigation measures. Now I'll move on to tonight's action. And so that includes adoption of two resolutions regarding the project's SEQA documents and permit approvals. I will revisit this slide, but first we'll do a brief presentation from the project architect on the project's design. I'll also note, prior to the design presentation, that the Architectural Review Committee did review this project in March and expressed support for the project's design and materials and recommended Planning Commission approval. And now I will hand it over to Dahim Meng. She's representing the project architect Group Four, and she will take us through the project design.
Thanks, Kelly. Do you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
As Joanne mentioned earlier in the presentation, we're working closely with the community and getting them engaged through the multiple rounds of outreach and surveys. The current design captures the design values, which were prioritized by the community, which were stucco finish, natural stone, wood. This is the view from the City Parkway. The first portion of the building that you're seeing up on the screen is the community hall. The first floor has classrooms and the community hall on the second floor. The large corner glazing on the second floor celebrates the view out to the park and transparency to the interior activities. There's a dedicated outdoor deck for the community hall. Also, as you can see here, the main entry is highlighted with the trellis. Next slide, please. This is the view from the park side. The building is articulated through three large volumes that corresponds to the major program spaces, which includes the community hall, gymnasium, and auditorium. The roof for the pavilions creates a nice rhythm that breaks down the building massing in response to the interior volumes. Also, the roof on the pavilions are angled. This allows daylight into the building, daylight into the interior spaces with clear story windows, as well as to provide good solar orientation for the potential PV panels on the roof. Clear story glazing takes advantage for the north light, allowing indirect natural light into the building without the glare in the active spaces, such as the gym and in the indoor pool. Where there is a potential for glare, we're using fitted glass on the clear story windows. There is a community plaza in front of the building, creating indoor/outdoor spaces, destination for the community, both formal and informal uses. Next slide. This is the view from the auditorium. The smaller massing in front of the auditorium is for the party rooms. The larger corner glazing provides the view connections to the park and daylighting. Indoor/outdoor connections are strengthened with a roll-up door at the auditorium. The pool and the party rooms have direct access out to the dedicated lawn space for informal use and programming. The next slide shows the exterior material palette summary. The color palette is based on the community's input and preference for the warm earth tones. We're using stucco finishes as the base in warm shades of greens and grays and stone as accent materials. Next slide. Stone cladding is used at the vertical accent walls that anchors the building and enrich the facades. The woodlook finish trellis and the sun sheets for the windows are used for easy maintenance and durability. Also, we're using fitted glazing on the clear story. The building design has substantial amounts of glazing throughout to let the natural light into the building and take the advantage of the beautiful park that we're in and to connect indoors to the outdoor. That's all I have for the project design. I'll toss it over to Kelly for tonight's action.
One moment, just getting my video started again. So once again, thanks, Dahim. I'm returning to tonight's requested action on this slide. And then we can move on to questions and discussion. Presentation is concluded, and myself, staff, and the SEQA consultant, as well as the project architects, are all available to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly, and thank you, Dahim. That was a very helpful report. And I'd like to ask my fellow commissioners if they have any clarifying questions for staff.
I do have one.
Go ahead.
So in relation to the transition, obviously, it is correct that the mandate from the state to transition to the VMT metric is not enforced until, I believe it's July 1st of this year. My understanding is that, I mean, that passed in a law like in 2013 or 2014, and quite a few cities have already fully adopted it as their standard for reviewing environmental impacts. And Level of Service is still commonly used as a matter of traffic analysis for a project that is considered inappropriate as an environmental metric. I mean, I guess, as long as we are now, anything that we're going forwards, that we're working with a consultant, they're using the VMT. But I'm just a little puzzled as to whether it was the city requested that LOS be used in this or whether our consultant is just kind of a little slow to adapt. I just, I did find it a little strange.
Yeah, so I think that I will actually hand that question over to Teresa Wallace, who is our SEQA consultant. You're correct in your notation. You're correct in your notation of the date in which it's in effect. I think that you'll find that cities throughout the Bay Area are kind of in different phases of moving to VMT, but Teresa can probably speak to that phenomenon as she works with multiple jurisdictions.
Yes, that's true. Cities are taking varied approaches to VMT, but it is true that the metric of VMT is not required until July first. And so when this traffic study was initiated a year ago, the decision was to not utilize VMT as the metric and to use level of service. And it's also true that level of service is no longer an impact under Sequa. But cities do have the discretion to analyze level of service and compare that to safety impacts on the circulation system. And so, you know, that's all that I really have to add. We did include a VMT analysis in the final DIR and the determination was that the project would actually reduce VMT compared to existing conditions. So we didn't feel it was necessary to establish a specific threshold and continue on with a project-specific analysis in this case.
Thanks Teresa.
Commissioner Harmon, do you have any further questions about that or any comments?
No, um, I, you know, I mean, I, I'm satisfied that we will be, you know, moving, moving towards. I mean, just, you know, from the environmental perspective, like the, I mean, the sort of overriding concern is reducing vehicles mile, vehicle miles traveled. And I think it's appropriate in terms of traffic and safety to, you know, look at the level of service through intersections. So I, uh, yeah, it was, it was odd to find that. Where I, I think a lot of, a lot of places have already adapted to the new environmental regs. But, uh, but yeah, I'm, I'm fine with the answers.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other commissioners that have any clarifying questions for staff? Okay. Well, in that case, we'll go ahead and move into public comment. And as a reminder, each speaker has a three-minute comment period. Tonight, because of our Zoom format, we will be taking public comments all at once. And then we will address them after public comment is finished. So for public comment, Melissa, are there any members of the public who have their hand raised that would like to speak on this item?
I see no hands raised.
Should we give them a minute?
We, we could. If any members of the public are out there, um, just so you are where we have four members of the public present. If you would like to speak on this item, please use the raise your hand feature. And I see no hands raised.
Through the chair, um, I've, uh, some people are not familiar with Zoom and in some, on some operating systems, you have to click the participants button first and then the raise your hand button will appear. Just let people know that, just in case they're trying to raise their hand and cannot.
Yeah, just for a quick summary, that is correct. On some systems, if you don't automatically see the raise your hand feature, what you can do if you have a mouse or, um, some, if you're on a tablet, if you just tap on the screen, you should see a ribbon appear at the bottom of your screen in one of the icons you should see as participants. It's an image of people. Click on that, a separate box should open that has your name listed. And at the bottom of that pop-up window, you should see raise your hand or possibly a three-dot symbol. And when you click on that, it would have raise your hand. There are still no hands raised, just FYI.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for, for helping with that. Well, in that case, I suppose we'll need to do a roll call vote to close public comment.
Um, for just for technical reasons, it's actually to close the public hearing.
Oh, close the public hearing. Okay.
Sorry.
Thank you. All right. Shall we do a roll call vote to close the public hearing? I'll need a motion.
I will make a motion that we close public hearing.
Second?
Okay.
Chair Lathan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Biassadi?
Aye.
Commissioner Hamilton?
Aye.
Commissioner Harmon?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan?
Aye.
You have six zero votes.
Okay. Thank you very much. So then we will bring it back to the commission for a commission discussion. Are there any commissioners who have any further questions or points of discussion? I suppose there aren't.
No.
Okay. Well, it's, it's so exciting to have this come before us. I'm kind of surprised we're all quiet about it, but maybe we're just feeling like it's about time.
Well, through the chair, I think that, um, I believe that first of all, we've had several presentations. Many of us have served, if not all of us, in some form of ARC review or on the committee and so really well informed. So I found myself, as I was reading this packet, that it was really understandable to me because of the rounds of times that it's come before the commission and myself. And so it's clear, you know, and it's, um, it's, the presentation was thorough and, and I am eagerly excited for the next steps.
Yeah, through the chair, um, echo everything the Commissioner Johnson had to say there. The, the building itself is beautiful. It's really well designed. It's going to be a wonderful addition to the park. This project is a long time coming and I'm excited to support it tonight.
Thank you.
Through the chair, um, I agree with all that's been said. I think it's a beautiful building. It looks fantastic. It will be a great advantage to San Bruno. And I sincerely hope that we can get funding for the second phase because I think that would be wonderful and especially the paddling pool. I think the younger generation will go head over heels for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Morgan. Okay. Well, I, I feel the same way. I'm, I'm delighted to see our community honored with a project like this and it's going to be an incredible gift to our community. So thank you for everybody who's, who's participated in, in bringing this to this point. So in that case, if our commission discussion is coming to a close, we'll go ahead and move into our actions. And I understand we have two resolutions that need to be addressed.
Can everyone see my screen? I'm just showing the action to us.
Can I, uh, move to adopt the Sequa findings of fact and statement of overriding considerations and mitigation monitoring and reporting program and approving use permit nineteen oh two oh and architectural review permit twenty oh three based on the required findings and subject to the attached conditions of approval?
Second?
I second.
I'm sorry. Have to see all those in favor.
Okay, we'll, we'll do a roll call vote if staff could facilitate that, please.
Through the chair, um, this is a little different. We actually need to take two separate actions. The first one is to adopt a resolution to certify the final DIR. That would be your first motion.
Okay. So let's, let's motion. Let's, I'll accept a motion for that.
I will also move.
Might I interrupt you? I'm so sorry. This is the city clerk, Melissa Thurman. I, I want to help make this easy on all of you. So I understand that we do have a motion and a second on the table for the adoption of the Sequa findings of fact, as well as the approval of the use permit nineteen dash zero two zero and all the language that comes with that. As Commissioner Harmon just greatly read out to all of us, I would actually say that you, you should complete that motion since it is on the table. And then we can do the adoption of the resolution certifying the final DIR as a separate motion after this one is finished, but we need to continue on with this motion as it was made. I believe there was a motion and a second by Commissioner Johnson and we should do the roll call motion on that. Got it. Thank you, Melissa. In that case, I will finish the motion by doing a roll call vote for that resolution that Commissioner Harmon just mentioned. Chair Lathan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Biassadi?
Aye.
Commissioner Hamilton?
Aye.
Commissioner Harmon?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan?
Aye.
You have six zero vote.
Okay. Thank you.
Shall I also move that we adopt the resolution certifying the final environmental impact report?
Yes, please.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Chair Lathan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Biassadi?
Aye.
Commissioner Hamilton?
Aye.
Commissioner Harmon?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan?
Aye.
You have six zero vote.
Okay. Well, I'm pleased to say that it sounds as though we have adopted these resolutions and it will now move forward to city council from here, yes?
Um, no, this is actually the final action for the project.
Oh, this is? Oh.
Yay.
Okay. Wow. I think if we were.
The next thing that happens is they actually build it.
Right.
Good time. Um, okay. Well, then we will, with smiles on our faces, move into item four B. It's the review of the twenty twenty through twenty twenty-five, five-year capital improvement program and fiscal year twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one capital improvement program budget. And I'll let staff say the rest of the details.
Through the chair, if I may, sorry for interruption. I was gonna ask if anyone needs to have a break before we continue with the rest of the agenda. Seeing none, we're good to go. Sorry.
Thank you. Thank you for asking.
Thank you for asking.
Okay, I think we're ready for the staff report.
Okay. Good evening, commissioners. Can you all hear me all right?
Michael, your volume is very low.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Okay, so before you, as a request for review of the fiscal year twenty twenty-one capital improvement program budget, otherwise known as the CIP, we're reviewing it for conformance with the San Bruno general plan pursuant to California Government Code Section six five four zero one. This is an annual review of infrastructure-related projects for the city's budget. In accordance with California Government Code Section six five four zero one, the planning commission must review the CIP and make a finding that is in conformance with the general plan prior to city council adoption. The scope of the planning commission review is to evaluate the CIP projects for consistency with the goals, policies, and implementation measures outlined in the eight elements of the general plan. The action is not to evaluate the technical aspects or the cost of the individual projects we're reviewing today. And a little bit about the general plan. The general plan is the city's long-term comprehensive vision for physical development in the city. It includes eight elements that provide policy framework related to capital projects in the areas of land use and urban design, economic development, transportation, open space and recreation, environmental resources and conservation, health and safety, public facilities and services, and of course, the housing element. So the city council will appropriate funding for projects that are planned for construction in fiscal year twenty twenty-one. However, the CIP itself covers a five-year planning period from fiscal year twenty twenty-one to fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five. The CIP functions as a planned work program for projects scheduled in subsequent years of the period. The CIP provides funding for capital projects that protect, preserve, and enhance the city's infrastructure, extend the useful life of public facilities, and improve or enhance city services. So now I'm going to go over and provide you a brief summary of this year's infrastructure projects that are under consideration for you today. The first one is the Commodore Tank Project. The city currently utilizes eight water tanks within its water distribution system. These water tanks provide storage for the citywide water systems in order to help balance differences in demands and supplies, provide emergency storage in case of supply failure, and provide adequate storage for fire protection. A water system matched the plan that was adopted in twenty twelve has determined that zone three dash five would have a one point four million gallon deficit by fiscal year twenty thirty-four to twenty thirty-five due to the anticipated growth within this zone. If approved, this project would fund the design and construction of a new approximately one point seven million gallon water tank to create storage in this zone for future demands. The preliminary location of this water tank is underneath Commodore Park. The second infrastructure project before you tonight is the downtown parking meters project. This project will implement the San Bruno Downtown Parking Management Plan, which was presented for you last year, which was approved by the city council in January of twenty nineteen. This proposed project would install parking meters in the downtown area to regulate short-term parking. The installation of parking meters would push long-term parking into adjacent, longer-term surface parking lots. Details regarding the type of meters, rates, exact location, and the enforcement hours has not yet been determined for this project. The third project is the Crystal Springs Road Utility Underground Project. The California Public Utilities Commission requires specific gas and electric to set aside a portion of their utility receipts each year for use in undergrounding existing overhead utilities. This is commonly known as the Rule Twenty A Utility Undergrounding Rule. In February eleventh, twenty twenty, the council established an underground utility district on Crystal Springs Road, extending from El Camino Real to Cunningham Way. Phase one of this project includes undergrounding overhead utility along approximately twenty-two hundred feet of Crystal Springs Road from Donner Avenue to El Camino Real. And phase two includes undergrounding overhead utilities along approximately fifteen hundred linear feet of Crystal Springs Road from Donner Avenue to Cunningham Way. The fourth project is the pedestrian safety and traffic calming project. This project involves developing a local roadway safety plan, otherwise known as an LRSP, to address the unique roadway safety needs in San Bruno. The city was awarded the Highway Safety Improvement Program grant funding to develop this program. The process of preparing creates a, the LRSP creates a framework to systematically identify and analyze safety problems in recommending safety improvements. Completion of the LRSP will result in a prioritized list of improvements and is a requirement to receive future HSIP federal aid funding. The fifth project is the Tom LaRafield Parking Lot Rehabilitation. The LaRafield Parking Lot is well utilized by visitors of City Park and due to heavy usage, it is in need of pavement rehabilitation. This project will rehabilitate the asphalt servicing, create additional parking spaces where feasible, and upgrade the accessible parking spaces for compliance with current ADA requirements. The sixth project is the Senior Center Trash Enclosure. The San Bruno Senior Center was originally constructed in nineteen eighty-seven and is typically visited by hundreds of patrons weekly. The center also uses, is also used for different city events, such as city council and planning commission meetings, as you're well aware of. This project would restore the trash enclosure, which is in current disrepair and is no longer functional. This includes providing new screening for the waste containers so that you can't see them from view and diverting waste spills to the sanitary sewer system and constructing an accessible entrance to the, to the enclosure. And the last project is the Pavement Management Program. This is actually an existing program that's ongoing. This program involves the repair and preventative maintenance of city streets. The condition of city streets is identified through an ongoing pavement management program called the PMP. The long-term goal is to achieve a pavement condition index or PCI score of eighty-four, which would eliminate the city's deferred maintenance backlog. However, in order to achieve this, the program would need to be funded to approximately nine million per year. However, in order to achieve this, the program would need to be funded to approximately nine million per year. The ci- the city's average score for its streets and roads is sixty-six. Streets are selected for rehabilitation work based on their PCI score, functional class, which is their traffic volume, and other criteria. The PMP is designed to maximize pavement longevity with timely and cost-effective rehabilitation while working within budget constraints. So, um, back to the staff report, um, in the staff report, you'll see, uh, staff's analysis of the seven programs against the general plan. Um, so if you could refer to those, you can get a sense for, um, how these would implement the general, general plan. And staff is asking you tonight, uh, that if you agree with staff, staff's analysis, that you make a motion. And a second to adopt the attached planning commission resolution finding that the proposed capital improvement program budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one is in conformance with the City of San Bruno General Plan. This resolution will be forwarded to the city council and taken into consideration as they evaluate the city's fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget. Please note, this, that this determination is not a green light, uh, for the projects themselves. Um, and also a roll call vote is required for this. And lastly, um, because the infrastructure projects are executed by public works, we have public work staff available with us tonight to answer any clarifying questions that you might have that would help you make your general plan consistency findings. Uh, and this concludes my presentation and, uh, again, I'm available and public work staff is available on this call as well or this, uh, video for any questions you might have.
Thank you, Michael. Um, does the commission have any clarifying questions for staff?
Through the chair, I have, I have a couple. The, um, I understand that we're not, we're not voting on the, um, details of any of these projects, but just wanna, um, I'm curious about a couple of things. The, um, the first one, the Commodore Tank Project, how disruptive to Commodore Park with that construction be? I don't, I, I wouldn't, I mean, would, would the entire park need to be demolished in order to put a tank that large in? Is it, are they thinking about putting in, you know, i- is it something that would, they would have to dig up the outfield of the, of the, baseball field for a time and, and then, of course, restore it afterwards? Just a little bit of detail about what, what that's gonna look like.
Good evening, Commissioner. My name is Heyuan Ritchie. Um, I am the city engineer for San Bruno. I can help answer some of your questions, so, uh, this project has not yet been designed and so some of those details are unknown. I think, you know, we would, of course, attempt to have the least amount of disruption as possible. Um, but it's in these, you know, even pre-designed stages, really hard to say, um, what that would look like.
Okay, that's fair. I appreciate that, thank you.
You're welcome.
I just, I have a comment about the, um, the, I guess, fourth, I, whatever, the, uh, pedestrian, the pedestrian safety and traffic calming uh, local road, road safety plan. This has been a long time coming and I'm very happy to, to see this. The, um, our bicycle safety committee, uh, pedestrian committee and the TSPC, you know, work to do this work, but they do it in a patchwork fashion. And this, having a program like this, um, to take a comprehensive look at, um, the whole city and put things in, and prioritize things is really gonna be helpful. So I'm very, very happy to see, to see that on the list. Um, and then my last, um, uh, well, I guess two more questions. The, the Tom Lara Field Parking Lot, I guess, I'm guessing that that's out of, just out of range of the, of the aquatic center construct, construction? Is that why this is a separate item and not part of that project?
That's correct, um, good evening, uh, commissioners, um, public works director Jimmy Tan. That is, um, it is part of the Tom, um, it is part of the, the black, the recreation aquatic project, but then we had separated it out, um, in order to have that parking lot reconstructed first prior to the construction of the, um, the recreation center.
Okay, all right, thank you for clarifying that. And then, um, and then lastly, I mean, we've known for a while that we've, we've fallen quite behind on our, on our, um, on our, uh, street maintenance and that's not the fault of anybody here. I, that's, that's not why I'm mentioning it. The, the nine million dollars per year to, that's required to get us back up to speed, um, uh, score-wise. Is that in perpetuity? In other words, the nine million dollars would get us there and then by the time we finish that, the roads we started with at the beginning need, need to be done again and it's a, it's a perpetual thing? Or is it, is it, we, we need to increase funding to nine million a year to get us back up to speed and then the, then the cost would drop?
Sure, um, I understand your question and we, um, are given a grant by MTC to evaluate the pavement condition of our, our, our local or, or city streets. And what they do is within a five-year timeframe, evaluate, you know, various scenarios, one of them being how to eliminate our deferred maintenance. Does that means bringing all the streets up into a good condition? I understand, you know, it's very challenging for any agency to accomplish that because of the amount of funding that's needed. Um, but it is, uh, that, nine million dollars per year for that five-year period and then
For five years.
After that, I mean, it, there would still be continued expenditures required to maintain, you know, the condition of the road. Uh, really what you wanna do is get the streets into a good condition and then where you can provide, um, preventive maintenance, which is a lot less expensive to administer than, um, you know, rehabilitation or, you know, reconstruction for roads that are, are failed, um, those, you know, on a per, per square footage basis costs in order to a lot more than, you know, preventive maintenance. So it's really trying to get to a goal where you don't have that different, um, maintenance anymore.
Understood, thank you.
You're welcome.
Those are all my questions. I appreciate, uh, the clarity on those, thank you.
Thank you. Do any other commissioners have any questions? For staff?
Through the chair?
Yes.
Oh, go ahead, uh, our, uh, question, Commissioner.
I went first earlier, you're welcome to go.
It's okay. Okay, I'll go then. Um, I don't know who in the city would be the one to answer, but I'll just, uh, the very first one under the, the, the water infrastructure. I wanted to just check in, um, about how is it currently the tank maintained and monitored?
So the first project for Commodore Tank, um, is that, I just wanna make sure I'm asking the correct question. So a tank currently does not exist, um, at this location. Um, however, our water division does maintain the eight tanks, um, within the city that are to serve the population.
Okay. I must have misread that. So there is not a tank currently right there, this is gonna be a, um.
Correct, it would be a new tank.
A new, brand new tank, okay, good. All right, and then the next one would be under the street rehabilitation. On the first one, um, where it indicates where it's, uh, implementing the parking meters and the push, uh, would push long-term parking into adjacent, uh, longer-term surface parking lots. Has there been any study or any, any tracking if, if the neighbors would be impacted? Now, once they start charging, will it go into the neighborhoods? Because people are going to start looking, they might think, okay, I'm gonna be longer than the thirty minutes or longer than the two hours, wherever it may be. And when it talks about that, um, they're going to adjacent and longer surface parking lots, where are they and which ones are they?
Right, so, um, we, we were, the thought for this project is to hire a, a firm to evaluate all that, you know, including the, the rates, uh, along downtown areas and maybe some of the, um, the sites, um, size streets that may be impacted by the, uh, implementation of the parking meters, you know, in the downtown. Um, so, you know, once we have the study completed and we can, you know, we will be able to determine all those, um, questions that you've, uh, you know, asked, uh, just now. But currently, right now, we just don't have a lot of the information, but we understand too that, you know, if we do implement, uh, parking meters in the downtown, it would definitely push a lot of the vehicles to the, uh, the residential areas too, and then we'll try to minimize that, um, if we can.
Okay, thank you. All right, and then, um, the facility upgrade, I think that question was out of, it was out of the range, but I had the same, the same question on that. It's out of the range of the recreation project and that's why it's being proposed in this way, okay?
Correct.
And and then on the Senior Center Trash Enclosure, I know that it's a trash enclosure and I can't help but push the question just a little bit. That building is thirty-three years old, is there any chance of, uh, it being placed for any painting? I mean, it's not chipping and peeling, but it is quite, you know, it's, the painting is quite antiquated from a point of it's not gonna fit within the modernization of our park. And it is very southwest, uh, look and as it is, doesn't have really attractive windows in the front. I'm just thinking, can, can there possibly be, uh, a potential painting to the building?
Yeah, so this is something that I can bring, uh, towards attention to the community services director who currently, uh, manages the building facilities, uh, division. Um, so I can inquire whether any, is, any future painting is scheduled for this, um, building. And in regards to this trash enclosure, this was a result of the accident that happened, you know, a few years back.
Yeah.
And, um, we restored the, you know, the corner of the building, but the trash enclosure, uh, uh, was, there was an interest to actually increase and expand the, uh, the footprint of the trash enclosure. And so that's something that we've been, um, kind of working on to try to do that, um.
Okay. Well, I would appreciate that because the building really is quite small, it's not a huge project, but I recognize that everything costs and everything is time. But this would be the time to do it, you know, it's kind of like an applicant comes forward, we push the limit, push the bar a little bit, raise the bar a little bit for applicants to do the next step, whatever it may be, and that's what I'm hoping for our building. It, as you come down, it's a main building that you see and to have it be attractive to look at. Uh, it's well, it's maintained, but be attractive to just blend in as they drive towards the, the park, so thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
And let's see, my question was answered on the perpetual project of the other one, I think that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Any other commission questions? Go ahead.
Um, all right, uh, so, uh, just to understand the, the Commodore Park Tank Project, I mean, the goal here is, i- i- that basically it sort of, it provides a buffer that, that smoothes out demand, um, in terms of the inflows and outflows. This is not, I mean, my, my understanding is that our long-term sort of overall water provision on the scale of a year is, is fairly solid, given the, the city's history and so this is, this is project is simply to, to make sure that this neighborhood, their kind of, um, surge demand is met as the population there increases. Is that, is that basically accurate?
Um, yes, and so our water supply, um, is secure, it's, that's the long-term, projections for the water supply for the city as a whole. What the tank is doing is providing, um, some of the demands, uh, of peak demands. Um, if there were to be, um, a large, you know, emergency or fire flow situation, it would assist in those types of situations as well. You know, as unusual as they may be, um, it would be helping to, um, to provide that supply.
Okay, just making sure I'm re, sort of reading the descriptions correctly. And, uh, and I, I noted that, I mean, I know we have ongoing investments in the water infrastructure with the replacement of the, the water and sewer lines, um, starting in the heart. I think I actually saw some notifications that a project was going in, um, pretty close to me over at, uh, in the vicinity of First Avenue. And that, that basically, that's all already budgeted and hence is not showing up here.
That's correct.
Okay.
Those are previous projects, um, and other CIP.
Okay. Um, regarding the meter project, uh, the description was, sorry. I mean, I guess it says details regarding type of meters, hasn't been determined yet, um. With the scope of that study, um, this is somewhat maybe a personal thing. I, I rather like the completely virtual systems where you sort of minimize, you don't have posts in people's way along the sidewalk. And so I just wondered if that's already under consideration to do sort of a, a very minimal system where you, you know, punch your license plate in at a kiosk or through a phone app and, and then it's all observed with the automatic license plate readers.
Right, then you're, you're absolutely, um, right on, on the right path and that's something that we've actually looked at. We've actually looked at several vendors already.
Oh, wonderful.
That's some demonstrations of that, so yes, license plate readers are something that we're considering right now, you know, for enforcement.
Yeah.
And again, you know, meters, you know, a single kiosk where everyone just goes up instead of having individual, you know, pay stations.
Yeah, it both, it both seems like less disruption of the public space and possibly cheaper to maintain, so it just, it seems sensible. That's great, okay, I am glad to hear that. Um, and then regarding the utility undergrounding, uh, I wondered whether it is possible for CityNet to get in on some kind of collaboration with PG&E so that if we did want to get our, cause I, my understanding is a, a fair amount of our cable lines are strung overhead as well, I think. And it seems like if, if we're gonna dig up the street, you know, um, can we get those, can we get those cable lines buried so that they're not vulnerable to windstorms as well? And, and as well as having the opportunity to say, once we have sort of a, you know, CityNet, I don't know if the right term is a right-of-way, but that, that if we then do want to pull fiber through, we have the conduit. Um, and fiber in particular, my understanding is you can reasonably run it in proximity to, um, alternating current lines and because it's optical, it doesn't interfere, whereas, um, the coaxial cable, that's more of a problem.
Right, so now the project is to underground a lot of the overhead utilities along the corridor, uh, from Crystal Springs, along Crystal Springs Road from El Camino to, uh, Donner. That's the first phase. With that, the, yes, any, you know, if there isn't a, a fiber system, the CityNet fiber system along that route, um, is something that we could consider, we would have to talk to CityNet, um, um, staff to figure, you know, what their actual needs are, you know, within the corridor.
Okay, I guess, I mean, cause like the, the document specified it was a PG&E undergrounding, that that's, that there, so I mean, it, it seemed like it was about the power lines, but I just, uh, I mean, I know, like, budgets are tight, blah, blah, you know, I mean, there are issues, but it seemed like if we're going to approve spending some city money, I don't know if that's like, if we're basically spending PG&E's money that's allocated to us for it or exactly what the budgeting here is. But if we're spending money to dig up the street and bury the power lines, it seems like it would be better to also do the cable lines at minimum at the same time and ideally be in a situation where we then have access to come back and string fiber. Cause I think, I don't know, this is not an area in which I have super deep expertise, but my understanding is it is typically possible, once you have a conduit in place, to, to pull additional lines through it without completely digging it up again.
Right, and so the PG&E are not, it's not the only utilities that will be undergrounded. If there's, you know, communication lines that are, you know, within.
Okay, so that alr- that already would be planned as if, if there's, if there are things like SB cable lines running along those that would already be planned to be undergrounded in the same project?
That's correct, so because the, the, you know, the overall goal is to remove all the wooden poles that exist along the corridor, so anything that are actually strong right now, you know, along those poles would be undergrounded, regardless of whether it would be PG&E or not.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thanks.
And I guess if I could also clarify, these are Rule twenty A tariffs and so, um, they are rates collected by PG&E that are meant for this purpose. So other than, you know, our contributions to things that the Rule twenty A wouldn't cover, it is something that, um, PG&E's rates would be covering. And, um, you know, they're often referred to as dollars, but they're actually dollars, they refer them more as credits.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, uh, from the commission for staff?
Nope.
No? Okay, well, in that case, we get to open that up to public comment again. Um, so, members of the public, if you would like to, um, have any, to express your comments or, uh, share anything, this is your chance. Go ahead and raise your hand, perhaps in the participants button at the bottom of your Zoom screen. And Melissa, are you seeing anything?
Uh, no, I do not. We do have, uh, two members of the public and to note, one is, uh, council liaison Marty Medina and, uh, the other is a public works employee. So they are still considered members of the public though, but, um, to be technical, but no, they do not have their hands up.
Okay.
I just wanted to note them just to say hi, more than anything. Okay, there you go. Okay, there you go.
Okay, well, in that case, um
Oh, well, you know what? Marty Medina just raised his hand. So as a council liaison, I will bring him in. Just one moment. Councilwoman Medina, are you able to hear us?
Yes, good evening. Um only because I was called, I was just gonna listen in, but I I uh I wanted to say good evening and and thank thank all of the uh everybody for for the work that they're doing and I I definitely appreciate appreciate it, and I'm sure the rest of of the council does too. So thank you.
Thank you. All right.
And I see no other hands raised.
Okay, well, in that case, um we can entertain a motion to close public comment.
Take a look. Be technical again, it's close the public hearing. I do just for the record, for the record, I'm in there, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry. We'll close public hearing with uh a motion.
I make a motion to uh close public hearing.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, roll call please.
Chair Luthen.
Aye.
Vice Chair Biassadi.
Aye.
Commissioner Hamilton.
Aye.
Commissioner Harmon.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan.
Aye.
You have six zero votes.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll go ahead and call the public hearing closed. Um, let's see here. Do we have any discussion amongst the commissioners?
Nope.
Okay, well, in that case, um if we'd like to adopt the resolution, we can start with a motion.
I make a motion, we accept the resolution for the approval of the uh capital improvement uh program.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call please.
Chair Luthen.
Aye.
Vice Chair Biassadi.
Aye.
Commissioner Hamilton.
Aye.
Commissioner Harmon.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan.
Aye.
You have six votes.
Okay, thank you. All right, that is passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Uh and then in that case, we'll go on to item four C. This is regarding the short-term residential rentals. And this item was previously agendized for the March seventeenth, twenty twenty Planning Commission meeting. But uh that meeting was canceled due to the shelter in place order. So tonight, uh we will review and make a recommendation to City Council uh at a future public hearing for adoption of the amendment of chapter twelve point eight oh uh definitions and chapter twelve point two seven oh of the San Bruno Municipal Code regarding short-term residential rentals. Uh staff report.
Good evening. My name is Pamela Wu. I I am the city's planning and housing manager. And tonight I have the pleasure of providing you with the municipal code amendment regarding regulation and permitting of the short-term residential rental. Tonight's agenda, I'll start with the objective for this item, then provide a background for the ordinance proposed. Followed by an overview of how ordinance will work and conclude my presentation with tonight's action and answer any questions that you may have. The objective for tonight is for Planning Commission to adopt the ordinance amending San Bruno Municipal Code, chapter twelve dot eighty, in parentheses definitions, and adding chapter twelve dot two seven zero, in parentheses, short-term residential rentals. Next, I'll summarize the background leading up to the work that has been invested into the proposed ordinance structure. In the recent years, cities have experienced growth in the use of residential properties as short-term rentals. These rentals are typically advertised on online hosting platforms such as Airbnb, HomeAway, VRBO, or any other online platforms. These platforms allow guests to rent rooms or the entire house from hosts on a short-term basis. Most of these rental duration are thirty days or less. This is also a result of the new shared economic model, where an unoccupied or underutilized resource in general demand is made available to rent to optimize utilization. Currently in San Bruno, there are no adopted regulations for the city to use to proactively identify these properties, regulate their uses, or collect permit fees and taxes or taxes. Whereas many other local cities such as Pacifica, Redwood City, or South San Francisco have adopted zoning regulations and permitting requirements to regulate these uses and their potential effects. However, establishing, implementing, and enforcing these regulations and collecting the tax revenue requires dedicated city time and resources, which present several policy issues for the city to consider when determining the appropriate level of city regulatory oversight and control. On July tenth, twenty eighteen, the City Council held the first study session and received a summary report that examined short-term rentals in the city. In return, the City Council provided several key directions to staff. They asked staff to research other cities' STR regulations regarding regulatory land use permits, to investigate parking-related concerns, to examine mechanisms for tax collection, to examine allowing STRs only in certain areas, neighborhoods, and also consider establishing a maximum number of short-term rentals citywide. Staff researched these items and provided response in the staff report. This comparison metric, matrix is also included as attachment two in your staff report, which summarizes regulation approaches in nearby cities that have adopted regulations recently. In January twenty twenty this year, City Council held the second study session to review the attached um proposed ordinance and provide a further direction regarding regular day, regulation and permitting short-term residential rentals. Specifically, the council provided input that resulted in a few minor modification to the draft ordinance. These input include allowing accessory dwelling units, ADUs, where the primary single-family dwellings is owner-occupied, to be used as a short-term residential rental use subject to an annual uh limit of a hundred and twenty days. Staff's original recommendation was ninety days, and while there was no clear consensus on the annual limit, a hundred and twenty days was suggested and staff is in agreement that this is the optimal number. Secondly, council provided input to allow the entire unit to be utilized as a short-term residential unit subject to an annual limit of a hundred and twenty days a year. Again, staff's original recommendation was a hundred and eighty days. While there was no clear consensus, a hundred and twenty days was suggested and staff's in agreement that this is the optimal number. Lastly, council directed staff to amend the definition section in the zoning code to be consistent with the new STR ordinance. Therefore, staff has amended um definition in chapter twelve dot eighty so that the uses listed are consistent for the draft ordinance. As the city currently does not have any adopted comprehensive regulations for short-term residential rentals, there are definitions and zoning regulations for hotels, boarding houses, and rooming houses, but they are not tailored to short-term rentals. For instance, a hotel is any facility that has six or more guest rooms, but they are not allowed in residential districts. Uses such as a boarding house or a rooming house are allowed um where lodging is provided for three or more persons for compensation. And they're only allowed in R three and R four, subject to a use permit. Today, the city has no record of any use permit that was granted for a rooming house or boarding house. Lastly, in R one zero, houses can be rented out up to two unrelated individuals or the entire house could be rented out for any duration of the time. The city's municipal code also allows taxation to be imposed for short-term rentals. For instance, all business including short-term rentals are required to obtain a business license for conducting business in the city. However, absent a specific program designed to identify those short-term rental units, the operators are not obligated to obtain a business license. Today, no operators have applied voluntarily. In addition, the city's transient occupancy tax, the TOT tax ordinance, applies to any transient who occupies at any hotel, including short-term rentals. The TOT requires that any transient who stays thirty days or less to pay a twelve percent tax to the operator who is required to remit the tax to the city. The inclusion of short-term rental in this ordinance will be a change, is a change, that was approved by the City Council last summer as a chapter three municipal update. Short-term rentals, like hotels, are a source of transient in a city who utilize city resources. However, there's no mechanism to identify and collect taxes and none have been collective, collected voluntarily. Since there's no current regulation to permit existing short-term rentals, staff has conducted a survey and found that there are eleven complaints regarding suspected short-term rentals since May twenty eighteen, which represents about a one percent of the total number of complaints that were registered at the same time. These complaints um involve illegal construction inside a unit to partition each bedroom separately so that the renters uh would not be benefit. This also include a whole house being rented out to different parties without adequate supervision by property owners. Or the whole dwelling u- units that were operated as a transient lodging. I'll close this section by mentioning that while there were a number of STR short-term rental complaints with the recent COVID nineteen, it is anticipated the short-term rental uses in city will be dramatically used will be dramatically reduced as both travel for business and pleasure pleasure will be significantly reduced as well. Next, I'll provide an overview of the proposed short-term rental res- short-term residential rental ordinance. The key features of this ordinance include establishing a regulatory permit requirement and process. And this would also include the type of short-term residential rentals, the locations where they're allowed, and the annual duration limit for each type of unit. This will also include a defined objective operational standards and provide clear requirements for owners. And lastly, this would define established taxation and licensing requirement. The first guiding policy consideration for the proposed ordinance is to decide on whether and how to regulate STRs through a land use-based regulatory zoning ordinance. Staff has prepared a proposed ordinance that strikes a moderate balance between potential neighborhood effects as well as city and property owner financial benefits. The application fees will be set by the City Council in the master fee schedule at a later date. This can also mandate and verify appropriate insurance policies. Next, the guiding policy focuses on the type of STRs where they can be allowed for a annual duration that could be imposed for each of the allowed STR unit. In the chart, it shows that the proposed ordinance differentiates STRs into three categories. The first category are the non-hosted units versus the second category, the hosted stays and the accessory dwelling ADU units. The now-hosted units are those that, oop, sorry. The now-hosted units are those that are typically involve the entire house to be rented out where the owner is not present during the stay. Based on council's direction from this January, an annual limit of a hundred and twenty days for such stay is imposed for non-hosted residential rentals. The second category include the hosted stays, where this could include one or two or up to three bedrooms or any other portion of the existing house to be rented out with the owner who also occupies on premise. Based on this scenario, there is no limit in terms of how many days short-term rental could be rented out. However, there is a limit of up to three bedrooms for any hosted um short-term rentals. Lastly, ADUs can also be used for a for short-term rentals up to a hundred and twenty days, and this is per City Council's direction. This provision would allow for optimal utilization of existing house and income creation for property owners while maximizing city's tax revenue. Also, the annual cap will minimize the potential for loss of longer-duration stays, which are the longer housing stock. There are other guiding policy considerations aimed to define objective operational standards and provide clear requirements for owner operations operators. In return, this will ensure health, safety, and the welfare for both San Bruno residents and visitors to the city of San Bruno. Some of some of these operational standards include requiring the existing parking spaces to be provided for short-term rental guests. That short-term rental guests will comply with city's noise or uh regulation and that emergency safety information are clearly posted in the short-term rental premise. And lastly, owner-operator should make sure that there's always a local contact available to answer any questions. In addition to providing land use regulations, guiding policy objectives pertaining to adequately collect tax revenue and issuing business license are required for any operator providing transient occupancy unit. While these are not under the zoning code regulations, I want to mention this to make sure that the Planning Commission is aware the role of the city taxation and city licensing requirement relating to the short-term residential rental use. To conclude, tonight's action, staff recommends the Planning Commission to adopt a resolution recommending the City Council adopting the ordinance amendment, including, excuse me, uh chapter twelve dot eighty and adding a new chapter twelve dot two seventy. Following tonight's action, City Council will have two separate meetings to introduce the ordinance and then adopt the ordinance. We anticipate this may be scheduled during the summer. Additionally, staff will be working on implementing of the short-term rental program such as develop developing the permit application requirements, forms, checklist, guidelines, informational handout, and other material. Staff will also be dedicating a website where information about the new regulation and permit type permit application and other relevant information are available to those who are interested. This concludes my presentation, and I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Pamela. Um, does the commission have any clarifying questions for staff?
Through the chair.
Yes.
I think I went first last time, so I was wasn't gonna go first, but I'll go ahead. So um would the um the software providers be required to verify perm uh the existence of a permit before allowing a new San Bruno property to be put onto their platforms? Or is this something that we would be monitoring after the fact?
Um through the chair, the exact administration of the program has not been vetted out, and we have talked about contacting or contracting a consultant to help the staff to administer the program. But there's no definite answer in in that direction yet.
Okay, um and then that actually that leads right into my second question. I I'm really, really hoping that the city will adopt a model similar to what they, to what I understand happens in Rapid City, where uh uh all of the, all of the work for collecting the taxes and administering that whole thing was all pushed on to the software providers who just put it, just put it that stuff right into their, right into their um into their systems and the city just collects checks. So, I mean, I I obviously it's must, it's much, it's not quite that simple, but um I don't want to see us lose too much of the revenue that's gonna come in here to or to unnecessary oversight. So I would like, I very much recommend that we go to a model where we trust the providers to send to to, you know, send, you know, to remit the, you know, collect the taxes and remit them. And then, you know, obviously, we have periodic audits to make sure that there's compliance. And then, you know, obviously, we have periodic audits to make sure that there's compliance.
I'll definitely note that in the meeting summary forwarding to city council.
Thank you. Just as a, just as a comment, this has been a very, very long time coming. The city has left quite a lot of money on the table by not doing this earlier, so I'm very glad to see this happening now.
Through the chair, I think the permitting at the moment is suggested to be every six months. I think it should be for a year, the same, similar to the surrounding cities. And I just wonder, the suggested fees for licensing, seven hundred and fifty for a first time go, it seems very high compared to what other cities are charging. That's just my comments. But I think, definitely think the licensing should be for a year because six months passes by very quickly.
I think it's biennial.
Again, okay.
Thank you Commissioner Morgan. Any other commissioners have any clarifying questions for staff?
Go ahead.
Go ahead Mary, go ahead.
No, it's okay. I'll give a chance to read a little bit more here.
I actually had a comment in direct, in direct response. The, my understanding, and staff can clarify, that I believe that fee was for two years. It was biennial, not semi-annual.
Through the chair, if I may, there was a fee proposed to city council during the study session. At this time, we're gonna go back to the city council for an exact fee and also with the duration. So, what we're presenting to the planning commission for consideration tonight is the structure of the ordinance. The program itself, who's gonna be implementing what and how much, how often, will be discussed at a later date.
Okay, there definitely were numbers in there, but my reading of it was, anyway. I did have an unrelated question. Just trying to make sure I understand what the, the day limits that are proposed, like sort of how those would function. So, when somebody has an A D U, that's sort of treated as a separate housing unit from their main house. Sort of it's permitted as a separate unit and, you know, rents out as a separate unit. And so, if we imagine somebody had, say, a three-bedroom house and an A D U, what I'm trying to figure out is would they be able to rent out the three bedrooms of their house for a hundred and twenty days and then sort of pack themselves into the A D U to be out of the way of their guests and then rent out the A D U separately for an additional a hundred and twenty days? Which, I mean honestly, like, I mean, two forty days out of three sixty actually seems pretty reasonable to me. But if, if that is the case, then I do wonder if, you know, it's like if you have three bedrooms in an A D U, you can get up to two forty days. But if you have a four or five-bedroom house, you can get a hundred and twenty days. It seems like it might be more reasonable for, for us to try to account this and just say like, you know, regard, like for the, for the parcel, you can get a hundred and eighty or two hundred and forty days to make it more consistent between those different arrangements. And I also, I, regardless, I'm fine with approving this. We can always come back and amend it later. Depending, you know, if we find that the way it works is not satisfactory. But it did, when I was reviewing that, it sort of, if I'm reading it right and the hundred and twenty day limits apply separately to two different buildings on the same property, it does seem like maybe we want to rethink that.
All right. If I'm understanding you correctly, this is assuming a property has an A D U already that could be also made available in addition to bedrooms or a whole house being rented out.
Yeah, that's sort of the scenario I'm considering. And I, I just, I wasn't clear whether those two limits apply separately to the two separate buildings.
We could definitely take that and forward on to the city council and see if there's any further clarification needed.
Yeah, I mean personally, I favor just like a longer overall limit. I think a hundred and eighty or two hundred and forty would be fine rather than one twenty. And so, if it does add up to two forty for the two, personally, I'm okay with that. But it does seem peculiar for it to apply differently depending on whether you have a large five-bedroom house or a, you know, three-bedroom house with an A D U in the back, like that seems odd.
Through the chair, I, I believe based on the study sessions that the intent of the, of the limit was to keep as much housing stock for traditional owners and renters in the, in the housing pool as possible. And to discourage folks from, you know, having a house be only for, for short-term rentals and removing that home permanently from the, the pool of housing because of the shortage. That was my understanding of what the annual limit is for. Regarding the length of it, a hundred and twenty seemed reasonable. I wouldn't be against it being a little, maybe a little longer, but not too much longer.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it's a question of, do you think if you can't have it rented out a third of the time, that's enough to discourage trying to operate a property for income that way? But anyway, that could be a matter of, of study. Sure, I just, I did think the, the, the question of like the sort of one large building versus a slightly smaller main building and an outbuilding being treated differently, that seemed like something to revisit. And we already went over the inspection fees and I, I strongly agree with Commissioner Hamilton's comments that the program should be self-funding. So, I, as we get to allocating those fees, I just want to make sure that, you know, that time for our inspectors is really, is fully recouped in those inspection fees. And then, I know I wrote down one other question here. Ah, yes, there was a statement in here that short-term rentals can be allowed up to three bedrooms in a single-family residential district for hosted stays. And I wasn't clear whether there was a limit on the number of persons per bedroom. So, if people are having, I mean, it's, is it, like, we, you know, if it's, well, you know, if you had an eight-person party that would, hey, oh, right, it said three bedrooms. Now, I can't find the text. There was something about an additional part of the house being rented, but it sounded like maybe it was limiting to an eight-person party with two people for each of the three bedrooms and two in the rest of the house, like on a fold-out couch in the living room or something.
There were, there was discussion about how many people could be in each bedroom. However, our current code says that you, each single-family residence can have up to three bedrooms to be rented out. At the same time, we also say that the entire house, or portion of the house can be rented out to two unrelated individuals who are not family members. I don't believe our code specifically states how many people can be in a bedroom. That may be a building co-related question in terms of occupancy, size of the bedroom, no more than eight people or a person in the same bedroom for exiting or other requirement. But the way the short-term rental ordinance is structured that we want to discourage more than three bedrooms or up to two unrelated individuals in our one zone to be rented out. And, and I should emphasize that the difference between short-term rentals and the regular rentals is the thirty-day reference. Oftentimes, people go on vacation, you rent it for a weekend or a week, but it doesn't necessarily go on for a whole month. Once you cross the thirty-one day, it's becoming just a regular rental, monthly rental, as if you will have to sign a monthly lease. So, these are more shorter duration.
Right, it's possible I've confused something about the regulation. Because yeah, there's, I know there's the long-term rental regulation where it's if you have owner occupied and also renting, they can rent out to two individuals, unrelated, in, in separate bedrooms. But I, it was on page thirty-seven of the packet, I think.
It could be in the matrix of other cities that has the number of bedroom, or number of individual in bedroom mentioned.
It's, okay, I'm, I'm looking at it, it was in, it was on page thirty-seven, it is in the matrix. And what I was looking at was the San Bruno proposed column. And what it says for the short-term rental regulation, S T Rs can be allowed, so. Yeah, that it was allowing, and I think, is this just for the hosted stay? You can rent out up to three rooms. And so, this, and so this would potentially allow for the short-term rental, if you're gonna rent out three bedrooms, it can't make sense for that to only be the two unrelated individuals, otherwise, how are they using the third bedroom?
Right, right, so our proposed ordinance for San Bruno does talk about S T Rs can be allowed up to three bedrooms. But it really does not have that two-person per bedroom, which is listed in Melbury or Redwood City's ordinance.
So, potentially, you could do a party of nine that's coming in to go to a convention nearby and they can pack in three people per bedroom. Which again, I'm, I mean, I'm okay with that. I just, I'm trying to make sure I understand what we're approving.
I think we're not discussing the number of individuals that can be accommodated in the bedroom, but focusing on the number of bedrooms.
Okay, all right, at least I think, I, I think I understand it now. Somebody else has questions?
Through the chair.
Yes.
I just wanted to say thank you to Commissioner Hamilton and Commissioner Harmon for your very thoughtful comments this evening. They're well-known, both of you, thank you. And Commissioner Hamilton's remarks about pushing the efforts off onto the software providers, I think that's brilliant. Why should we do work that someone else can do by pushing a button? I mean, we're using Zoom and it's working fine. Why wouldn't we want to automate this portion of our project? So, thank you gentlemen for those comments.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions. Some of them have already been asked. Has there been any discussion with Airbnb to see how properties are used and what, what potential issues they have? And just to have, they're the users basically of, or the, not users, the people renting are the users. But they know the, they know the pros and cons of this whole thing. And I'm wondering if there has been any opportunity for, for that end of it.
Sure, through the chair, staff has not had any formal conversation with Airbnb. However, we've had a conversation with these consultants or contractors that Commissioner Hamilton's were talking about who have extensive knowledge on administering permitting programs, compliance modules, and whatnot. What Airbnb does is that they provide a advertising platform for those who are interested. They, their perspective is slightly different than the city trying to provide a regulatory control and oversight.
Sure, I understand that. Okay, well, thank you for that feedback. Let's see, and I thought I heard you say that there's already been, you did some comparisons to Melbury and I think you said Redwood City. So, it sounds like, like there's been a lot of homework behind the scenes on this before I came to this point, obviously. And what about, let me look here, on page three of eight, there was in the very first bullet, when you talked about, there was, it was a hundred and twenty days and it was changed to a hundred and eighty days. Was that just to align, to align numbers or was there some math, math reasons to change those numbers?
Sure, through the chair again, so it's actually the other way around. Staff has originally proposed a hundred and eighty day. Council provided input to, I, I don't know if there's any math behind it, but to align the hundred and twenty days. Because originally, the A D Us were proposed with a limit of ninety days. So, the limit for A D Us went up and then others went down.
Sure, sure, I can see that. The only reason I raise even the question is sometimes we do things to make things align and to make them easier. But there's sometimes mathematical reasons behind it that doesn't always truly make sense. And I've come into experience that in different, you try to align something, but it's, someone not working it really won't know. The other thing on the next one down, on, on, we are looking at hotels, boarding houses, rooming houses. You know, there are a lot of scenarios that could be done and you can never write everything down. But there was other language like granny units and in-law, in-law units and student units and maid quarters. There was a number of years back, I can't tell you how many years back, I don't know, maybe it's been fifteen years, I don't really know. On London Court, there was, it came before the commission and it was a project, I believe it was twelve thousand square feet. And that had a maid's quarters in there. And so, some of these have already been in place, well, I don't know how many maid's quarters we have in San Bruno, but this particular one did. And we looked at this really thorough, long before any of this was ever a consideration. So, I don't know if there are other places in San Bruno that might have, I mean, we're calling A D Us now, we're calling them other things. But I, I think that there has to be some level of glossary for all this stuff. Because people will say, well, I don't have an A D U, or I have a granny unit, or I have an in-law, or I have, you know, I have a, who knows what, but it, I think a glossary because there's so much here to really think about of the scenarios as, as we've discussed already. And there's also, which is a bit different, but there's board and care. Board and care can be from anywhere from six, six to fourteen. And there's also family daycare. Family daycare, because I've been in the business, was in the business for forty-five years, they stay overnight sometimes. And so, okay, so what does that mean? They're licensed by the Department of Social Service, so it's very different, but they are licensed, they have to get a license through us. So, there are those components. And so, you know, where do they fall into that? Let's see. My questions. So, anyway, those are my comments on that area. And then I was looking at the complaints, there were eleven complaints, but I heard you say tonight they were from twenty eighteen. So, there truly isn't too many complaints in two years when you think about it. I mean, if you live next door, probably it's a horrible thing, but eleven complaints in two years isn't, isn't horrendous. And also, I find it interesting, all of this is really just interesting information, right? And there's so, for myself, I'm the kind of person who wants to get in there, dig in and start working the process and looking at the pros and cons and the, all the scenarios and how it weighs out. And what I do, what I feel is, would be worse is to put so much control into it that it just makes it just not manageable well. And, but then there's also, when it talks about in the last paragraph, kind of in the middle, it talks about, let me see if I can read this. The entire house rented out to different parties without, out to different parties. Now, without adequate supervision from the property owners. So, you're talking about different parties, meaning different people unknown to each other, is how I interpret that, which is not unusual in a college town. You know, in a, in a place where, and in today's market, because housing is so difficult, it's not unusual for it to happen almost anywhere anymore. And so, in the monitoring of all that, you know. Let's see, I'm looking at now on page five of eight. You've answered the question because I had a notation here about the workload to staff and the bandwidth to accommodate all of that, but applications, but you've addressed that issue. Oh, and on the next one under where it talked about the biannual. Some people interpret that as twice a year, biannual means every other year. But it semi, semi-monthly is twice, twice a month, or semi-annually is twice a year. But maybe just in parents to look, put in, in that parents for clarification. Because some people look at that as bi, you know, biannual mean, it could be twice, bi, right? It could be twice and could be a language, could be lots of different things. So, I would recommend for the clarification purpose. I do agree that looking at the rates at seven fifty, five fifty, I'm glad to hear that there's gonna be, going back to take a look at some of those areas. For, is it, is it aligned well with cost and all? I mean, it's important that the city gets revenue and as my commissioner, my colleague indicated, it's been sitting on this for a long time, but the best time to do is now and, and it's good to move forward. But it's also important that, that it's done without being onerous to the applicants. Okay, and I think down here, whole house. Whole house rentals, I have a question here, but I don't know what that means. Such as, oh, where it says establish clear requirements for owners. I'm not sure that I quite understand. The ordinance would set requirements for owners such as owner occupancy validation through the permit process and process and posting of local contact information for guests. And the local, blah, 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 you know, I got really wordy and whatever, and I just couldn't get to the point of thinking, okay, what is the actual goal here? And just having language that's clear. And, and sometimes when you send it out to agencies, they have their, they have their own, all of their own verbiage and, you know, layman's terms are really important, so I really want to encourage that. And uh, something here that I under. Oh, and then on page seven of eight, um, the, the third bullet. When it talks about enter into a voluntary collection agreement, BTA with Airbnb, does Airbnb currently offer this service?
Um, I am not the best person to answer, I'll do my best to explain. Airbnb does offer an agreement for a city to enter with them, so that Airbnb will remit some of the online taxes that they have been collected. However, Airbnb opts out of um providing the detailed information of how those fees are collected or these taxations were collected. Currently, the city of San Bruno does not have an, a, a contract or an agreement with Airbnb to take these money.
Right, right, premature, okay. Alright, and then the last paragraph, should the city council choose to reduce the maximum number of days per year of hosted and or non-hosted units, accessory dwelling units and or zoning. But you ha, when you read some of these pieces, you have to read them and reread them, if there is going to be, I'm sure there would be much easier clarification once it gets down to uh, the implementation of an applicant, it'll be much clearer. And there's nothing better than tables and putting sometimes, you know, the number of bodies or heads or symbols that indicate what it is, you know, tables make all the difference in the world. Okay, I think that's what I've, I've gotten so far. Alright, thank you.
Sure, through the chair, if I can um just provide some clarification to Commissioner Johnson's uh question. Um, so in the world of short-term rentals, again, we're talking about anyone who is a transient occupant staying at a location for less than thirty days. So this will take out anyone who is a college student who's um staying in a facility permanently for more than a month.
Okay, so though, if a per, but it indicates maximum, maximum days per year is a hundred and twenty.
That's um adding it up, so if I stay two weekends, uh, two days this weekend, two more days next weekend. Collectively, this entire year, this unit can only be rented out up to a hundred and twenty days. Right, so, but not a hundred and twenty days consecutively.
So in other words, they would limit a person who has an Airbnb to a hundred and twenty days a year?
Correct, however, each duration will have to be less than thirty days.
So you can potentially have, I'm sorry, then. Uh, so you can potentially have a person staying there twenty-nine days and then a new person twenty-nine throughout the whole year.
Up to a hundred and twenty days.
Up, up to a hundred and twenty days.
That's correct.
Alright, so you cannot utilize the whole year. So if you think that you're going to utilize your unit for, for an entire year, that you, that you actually have a unit, that um, basically it's a hundred and twenty days out of the year.
Correct.
Let's say I put an ADU in the back of my hill on Sweeney Ridge. And uh, so the max that I would get is a hundred and twenty days.
Hundred and twenty days, correct. So for instance, you have an ADU in the backyard, um, you have a renter who wants to stay permanently. So sh, he or she will have a monthly lease with you.
Right, that's different.
Right, that's different. However, if you're not able to secure a renter, somebody wants to rent this weekend plus next weekend plus the weekend after. Just make sure that each duration is less than thirty days and collectively these do, these days added up is no more than a hundred and twenty days.
That's interesting.
So that's the first clarification. Um, secondly, you mentioned there are the care facility. So there's the long-term care, there's the childcare possibly, they're actually in a different land use category, they're the care facility. So there are actually three different categories. And in the world of short-term residential rentals, for instance, li, uh, using you as an example. You could rent out a room in your house while you still live in your house. That's what we call the hosted stays, cause you're also hosting your guest. If you somehow think that you will be traveling and your house will be vacant most of the time. You could put your house on the market where the entire house is available for rent less than thirty days. Or you're not on the same site, which is a non-hosted state. Or the third scenario is, is the ADU in the backyard, that could also be rented out while you are still occupied in the main dwelling unit.
And if you were not to be in that dwelling unit, then you could not let that.
Correct, if you do not live in that unit, you cannot rent out your ADU for a short-term rental purpose.
Like, for instance, we go to Australia for long periods of time. So, no, it's never been more than six weeks, however, that is, you know, uh, let's say we wanted to stay there three months. So would that be considered us being in, I mean, it's still our home.
Then if, so if you have your house and ADU and you're not, you're in Australia, you want to rent out your main house. That's fine, that's a non-host, uh, that's a non-hosted state. But you just have to make sure your, your visitors don't stay more than thirty days at a time. You cannot rent out your main house and ADU at the same time. So that's, that's the main difference. Um, and then the biannual um, limit is really every other day, but I do agree that there will be more clarification.
Yeah, I mean, we have lots of different people with different interpretations and languages and, and uh, so in all, in all fairness, the clearer the better.
And the other thing I do want to provide clarification is that there is no commercial operation um allowed in short-term rental. Ie, um, somebody who wants to rent a nice home to host a wedding, do a corporate retreat, um, some sort of a party. Now, this is only for uh overnight accommodation, um, sleeping arrangement those type.
Okay, so I do know that there are several, like in our, uh, in a, in a couple of uh organizations in San Bruno. They, they look for locations to have someone come in while they're working on a project. And it might be a six months project and they're staying there for six months. So, so that would be into a lease agreement, basically. Okay, I'm trying to wrap my brain around all the components. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Uh, any other questions for staff from the commission? Okay. Alright, so I don't think that we have um opened a public hearing for this yet. So if we have no more commission questions for staff, we'll move uh to open the, a public hearing. Uh, Melissa, do we have uh any members of the public who would like to raise their hands and make comment?
I see no hands raised, no.
Okay, so in that case, uh, I could entertain a motion to close public comment, or public hearing.
Yes.
I will move to close the public hearing.
Okay, roll call please.
Chair Luthen?
Aye.
Vice Chair Beasadi?
Aye.
Commissioner Hamilton?
Aye.
Commissioner Harmon?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan?
Aye.
You have six zero votes.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Um, so uh, public hearing is closed. And uh, we'll bring it back to the commission, does, do any of the commissioners? I know we are, already did a lot of speaking about it, but do commissioners have any um other comments or uh discussion?
I, I just, I have a quick question, which was I um, I know I had suggested that the council consider adjusting the day regulation to focus on the parcel rather than the dwelling unit. And I, I believe there was another recommendation for comment, I've forgotten what it is, but I, I wasn't clear whether that just sort of automatically gets forwarded or whether we want to sort of include those recommendations as part of our resolution.
Um, typically, those will be included as a meeting summaries, so I do know that there is a um a comment made by Commissioner Harmon about um how long each unit could be rented out, whether or not it's a combination of a hundred and twenty plus a hundred and twenty, or there should be a cap on for property. I also have a note that um the mentioned the seven hundred and fifty dollars and five hundred dollar um permit fee and a re, uh, annual uh renewal fee could be too high, so I'll be also noting that to the, um, to city council in the meeting summary. Um, the resolution that you will be uh taking action tonight is basically forwarding your recommendation, should you will, to city council in adopting the ordinance. But your comments will definitely be included in the staff report as part of the planning commission hearing uh summary.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Another question for Pamela. It, are the days, those limit, those a hundred and twenty days, all of the daytimes, are they in alignment with other cities, basically?
Um, the cities that we have surveyed um do vary quite a bit, if you look at the matrix. Um, certain cities actually have no limit on how many days that can be rented out. But some cities, with that said, don't allow ADUs to be rented out. So it's, it's kind of, it's hard to make a, a, a fair comparison, sometimes you'll be comparing apples and oranges. But um hundred days, about ninety days, a hundred and twenty days is about the average, or cities do want to put a, some sort of annual limit.
And what is the reason for that?
So that it's not taking the housing stock completely from the market. So say that if you reserved a unit
That's right, but.
Made available three hundred and sixty-five days, then this is not available for a regular person who wants to permanently stay in that, in that unit. And, and yet again, there is another um statement that staff made, this is really to help the resident to optimize the utilization of existing housing stock. So like you sometimes who travel on a vacation um to somewhere else for a duration of time, longer duration. Or your house sitting there vacant, you could optimize a little bit of income by allowing people to stay in your, uh, in your property.
Okay, thank you for that.
Uh, just one other comment, uh, I'd like to recommend to the council that they make the permitting for a year, not six months. Okay?
Okay, alright, I'll note that.
Okay, any other commissioners have any other comments? Okay, um, I just, I, for myself, I wanted to say, uh, thank you for all the thought that all the commissioners have, have given this. Uh, it's really detailed and really, um, it's really important, I think, to find a balance between um maintaining the stock of longer-term rentals for folks who want to live in this area. Um, with the shortage that we have, but then also respecting property owners. Right to a certain degree to leverage their properties to bring them some income, because that's not easy here either. So um, I really do appreciate the thought that's given to this. Uh, I also do support pursuing the taxation through the listing sites, Airbnb, uh, whoever. I really don't want to further, I don't encourage further burdening staff with collecting this on top of uh the other duties that they are performing to help us uh in the city. And I'd never heard of um what Commissioner Hamilton had mentioned, uh, which is going, putting the burden on the sites themselves. I'd heard of third-party um businesses that will, you know, track folks down and, and collect uh, and manage all of that, but if um there is a way and you could dig into whatever magic Redwood City's doing, I think that would be really beneficial. And uh, oh, my last question for staff was, I keep seeing a three-bedroom limit. And I, I'm sorry, I don't have the report in front of me because um, I don't. But um, was, was there a limit to renting? I don't know how to use the screen to do two things at once, I just don't, um, what? Can, can folks rent out a, a whole house that is more than three bedrooms?
Yes, yes, so you, you can. So the three-bedroom is that if you are also um, still living at your house, and say that you have an eight-bedroom house. You're occupying one and you want to rent out seven. So the limit will be three. However, if you do have the eight-bedroom house and you're uh, like Commissioner Johnson who travels through Australia from time to time, you could put the entire house on the market for a short-term rental use.
Okay, okay, that seems like good flexibility, I was just confused by the, the three-bedroom mention, so.
Through the chair, excuse me for interrupting, so, and we'll leave that question, so if I can put the whole house, not that I'm going to, but if you can put the whole house um, on the market, can it be, if you have eight bedrooms, could it be to eight individual people?
No, this will be one, that will be one.
That's what I thought.
Not, not one individual, but one party.
One party.
What, one family or one group of friends, one, one online transaction, if you will.
Oh, well, then you can, it's a workaround, that's for sure. It's one transaction and someone says, okay, I'll be the one. You know, we had that issue in across the bay, right? One person, one person uh rented it and then they had a variety of of uh people staying there, then they had that party and then they had that death and on and on, so, so that's a huge workaround.
Right, right.
Can't control everything, I guess.
Well, through the chair, there's absolutely nothing stopping that scenario from happening in San Bruno tomorrow.
That's right.
Except that we wouldn't get anything for it.
Yeah, I actually, I guess, I mean, as an additional, I do find it a little peculiar that we would place stricter limits on the hosted stay than on the unhosted. I mean, it's like you have the eight-bedroom house, having the property owner on the premises, seems like it acts as a little bit of a break on some of the you know, potentially wilder scenarios, so I, I do wonder if it's even worth retaining that three-bedroom limit. You know, if the, right, if the unhosted stay is unlimited, uh, but I mean, again, I'm fine, I'm fine with forwarding it and, and considering amendments later anyway.
Because people will bunk however they want. It's like a hotel, I mean, there are hundreds of conferences where there are teachers and, uh, you know, teachers really want, there's a two, uh, two queen beds and there's four to a room. And so.
That's, that's long-term housing. I mean, I, to be clear, I've used Airbnb a fair bit, I mean, I've, I've gone places.
Me too.
You know, a group of friends and I, you know, went to Portland and, and rented a whole house and the, the family that owned it basically moved into their ADU for the weekend and like sixteen of us were in a, you know, seven-bedroom house or something and it's, it's fine for a weekend for a convention. And for the most part, people are not rowdy or whatever, it's fine. But I, I just, as an observation on the, the content of the ordinance, I think, you know, if you're going to say that the unhosted stay, you could rent out the whole house, then like you know, saying that if it's a hosted stay, you can only rent out three bedrooms instead of four or five, seems actually kind of unreasonable.
I would agree.
To piggyback on to Commissioner Harmon's comment, I, I also don't see a benefit to penalizing a hosted stay in that sense. But would those three bedrooms also, would those be unrelated parties? Or would that be a single party renting those bedrooms?
That'll be three unrelated parties. So for instance, um, you have three extra bedroom. Uh, me, somebody else, and somebody else could be occupying each of the bedroom. Um, um, we're all three unrelated individuals. Um, in terms of punishing the hosted or non-hosted state, I guess, um, I wouldn't necessarily categorize in that sense, um, when we, when staff brought this item to council for consideration in January uh, for study session, uh, we actually conducted, conducted a, at the glance, how many sh, short-term rentals are available in San Bruno? And be mindful, this is pre-COVID nineteen, so the scenarios and landscape is quite different today. Which is the reason I decided not to show that slide to you. Um, at a time, you, so there is a variety of different um, accommodations provided in city San Bruno. You'll see that most of the hosted rooms or ho, hosted stays are alone are downtown um transit corridor where they're close to Bart and, and Caltrain. So people are coming in, um, staying for a night, for, they are only looking for a bedroom. And these are in the, in the smaller setting, where there are large mansions and larger states with um amenities to offer up in the hills, or um other families or a, a family gathering or reunion are looking for a setting like that. So I think they're attracting different audience, so I wouldn't necessarily putting the two in, in a, in a fair comparison. But I, I do see that, um, to answer Chair Luthen's question is that if you have a house, and most houses in San Bruno unfortunately do not have eight bedrooms, they usually are in about three-bedroom range. Uh, so if you're occupying in one or two, you still have one or other that's available for rent, or your entire house of a three-bedroom or four can be rented out. So the, the scenario that I threw out earlier with a, eight-bedroom is more of a anomaly.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, if we don't have any more comments from the commission, um, I guess that we can entertain an action.
Um, through the chair?
Yes.
I'd like to, um, oh, it was on my speed there. I'd like to, um, oh, it was on my screen there. Um, I would like to, um, uh, propose that we adopt the resolution recommending the city council adopt the ordinance, amending chapter twelve point eight zero and adding chapter twelve point two seven zero.
I second that.
Okay, great. Roll call, please.
Uh, Chair Lathan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Biassadi?
Aye.
Commissioner Hamilton?
Aye.
Commissioner Harmon?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan?
Aye.
You have six zero votes.
All right. Wonderful. Thank you. That passes. Um, that is the end of our, um, our hearing items. And, uh, we'll move on to number five, which is the items from staff.
Thank you. Um, so I want to thank, uh, Commissioner Hamilton, Commissioner Harmon, and Vice Chair Biassadi to, um, host the May very first City of San Bruno Virtual Zoom Architectural and Review Committee hearing last Thursday. It went on smoothly and thank you very much for your patience and accommodation, working with staff. Um, it's one of the first and, and, and this is our second. Um, so with that said, um, we, with the current shelter in place, which should be lifted in June, staff has not decided if the next hearing will either be a Zoom setting or a regular setting. However, we do want to ask for volunteers for the next June Architectural Review Committee meeting that will happen on June eleventh. And like I said, at this point, it could either be another setting like this or a combination or hybrid or, um, but I do want to see, uh, if I can ask for any volunteers.
Volunteer.
Thank you.
I volunteer.
Thank you.
I can vol, I can volunteer as well.
Okay, and I'll take, um, Vice Chair as the, as the backup. Thank you. That's all I have.
Oh, I wanted to say hi. Hi, Darcy Smith.
Hi.
Hi, Darcy.
Full time, but I'm following the do's, do's of hiding your video. But I just wanted to say hi to everyone. So happy to see you guys. And I really would applaud you on tonight's success and how professional you've been and how your, your role in leading the cities, uh, the city planning commission into this, this, you know, this difficult time. And I just want to emphasize, many of us at the city have been here every single day. Um, Pamela has been in the office continuously. And I just wanted to say we brought the building staff and coenforcement staff full-time, May first. Um, so I know you don't, you don't see that because city hall is closed to the public. We put together a great video that's on our department website. Looks like Tom saw it. If you, if you saw it, it was played at the city council meeting last week. Uh, but I want to emphasize to, to you, since you, you're out in the community, that we, we are open on an appointment-only basis. Um, but we're happy to help anyone who needs to talk to the planning division or needs a building permit um, with them, the modification to the shelter in place order to allow all construction starting, um, May fourth. Um, you know, we've seen more permits come in and we're, I want to emphasize, we're open to the public, eight AM to five PM, Monday through Friday. So I realize city halls doors are locked and that's not the most welcoming. We're still trying to keep it as safe as possible for our employees who are here. And city hall is almost full. I'll just tell you guys that. It's a pretty full place. Um, there's a lot of us working. Um, and, you know, so if anyone needs help, I just want to emphasize, we're here to help. And we'd love to chat with you if you have any other questions that we can help you with. But I do hope we can open the doors soon. I don't have an exact timeframe for reopening city hall. But I want to emphasize, we bring in our customers every day. Um, we installed Plexiglas at our counter, which you can see in the video, and, and so far, everyone's been very healthy. And we're able to get our permit, yeah, our permits issued. So, um, I, and I also want to emphasize, just as a source of pride, we are one of the leaders on the peninsula that reopened our building division to counter service, you know, eight AM, May fourth. A lot of communities are still, um, challenged to reopen their city halls for that service. Um, we were incredibly blessed by city staff were able to install Plexiglas, you know, work out a solution. Um, so, you know, we're really are a city with a heart and a situation that requires us to adapt. Um, so I just want to commend all the staff here, um, and all of you in the community just for being adaptable. Um, it's a time of great adaptation, but I'd like to just say our, our city has really done some amazing things. And I'll, I want to also thank Melissa Furman, our city clerk, and our IT staff, um, Paul and Miriam, who are really, really leading the charge here with running the online meeting. So we've had a lot of city council meetings. Um, I'm really pleased that this planning commission meeting went so well. Um, but it's a true testament to the work of the city staff and especially the city clerk who is, is literally doing amazing work and, and frankly, training other city clerks. Um, and so I just want to commend her as you've seen her leadership tonight. Um, and I would just inspire anyone out there, you, you as planning commissioners, commissioners are levers in our community. So, you know, please get involved. Um, the chamber is doing some great work with the businesses. Um, and SAM SITA, another accounting organization, is doing some great work. So I know that the chamber just launched some efforts and I'm trying to bring in the chamber um, staff to make a presentation to council that hopefully can watch, but, um, check out the chamber website because they're really, really blessed with some, um, a grant from the community foundation to try to do some business work. And of course, as the community economic development department, we do, we also help businesses, but the chamber and the B A E C have really stepped up honestly in the last two weeks to do outreach and support. So spread the word. Um, and, and, and please, many of you, again, you're leaders in our community, so reach out and try to support um, anyone who needs help, especially in the business community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Darcy.
And then through the chair, I just want to acknowledge, uh, Kelly for, my gosh, Kelly, this is your first meeting and it was seamless. You did such a great job. I really want to say thank you. You led us, you lead us well anyway with thoughtfulness and always with clarity and with so much, so much prep that you do behind the scenes. And this meeting went seamless and I just acknowledge you for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I did want to, as a, as a customer, uh, I mean, I, I believe my, mother, the, the permit that is in process for my own property has been one of the, uh, the, the ones that's gone through this new process in our brave new world. And I, I appreciate the work that you guys have been doing to make that happen.
That's wonderful. Okay, well, thank you. Um, and then we cannot forget our opportunity for, um, second public comment. Uh, do we need to open that? Um?
No, the only time a comment period needs to be opened is if it is an advertised public hearing. Um, public comment, general public comment items not on the agenda does not need to be open or closed officially with a motion and a second. It can just be addressed. Is there any member of the public that chooses to speak, that sort of thing? And then if none, then you can just move on.
Okay, so the ones at the beginning and the end of the meeting in general are comment and they do not require a, a formal closing?
That is correct.
Okay, and then, but on each item, we do still need to do that?
If it is a public hearing item, which staff would know the difference and it should be listed on the agenda as public hearing. If it is that kind of an item.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. In that case, I, I don't think we have any members of the public left.
Um, nope, we, I don't see any hands up.
Okay, all right. So then, um, we'll move to adjournment. The next planning commission meeting will be held on June sixteenth, twenty twenty at seven PM. And it's my understanding, it's yet to be decided what the format of the meeting will be. Um, and that folks should check the city website for details as they are available.
Well, I will provide more detail.
Okay, all right. Thank you for letting us know, Pamela. Uh, the time is nine twenty PM and we are adjourned.